Say so.
I need to make Mr. Digest second. Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Hi, I'll fill a town council vacancy. I need a motion to appoint Robert A. Walsh to the Dayton Town Council, effective immediately, to fill a vacancy created by Heidi Hoover's resignation for a term to continue until December 31st of 2023. Or excuse me, or until a successor is elected and passed. So, thank you, Mr. Seward. Second?
Second.
Miss Mathias, thank you. Roll call please.
Ms. Mathias?
Hi.
Mr. Digest?
Hi.
Mia Jackson?
Hi. The eyes out. Motion passes. We are honored to have Mr. Chaz Heywood, the Rockingham County Attorney of Court with us this evening to swear in our new council members. Not used to this kind of crowd, right?
I'm Melanie. Do solemnly affirm the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And faithfully. And functionally discharge and perform all the duties.
As a member of the council for the town of Dayton.
Of the member of the council of the town of Dayton.
For the town.
And for ultimately.
Of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So, we got it.
So.
And say your name. I will, A. Walsh. Do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. Philosophatically, Constitution of the United States. Is the first constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And then I will faithfully. I will faithfully. And impartially. And impartially. Discharge and perform. Discharge and perform. All the duties. All the duties in common pardon. You're going on me. As a member of the town council. A member of the town council. From Dayton. From Dayton. For December 31st, 2023. December 31st, 2023. According to that's my running for the 2079. So, congratulations.
And this Mathias and I went down and were sworn in last week since we're also starting new terms. But we didn't do that because we had a closed session that we had to go. I'd like to introduce our council members. Emily Estes, who is unable to be with us this evening. Robert Seward. Mr. Seward will continue to service the Infrastructure and Safety Committee Chair and will take on an additional responsibility as the Police Committee Chair. Susan Mathias. Miss Mathias will continue to serve as the Personnel Committee Chair and as a member of the Economic Development Committee. Bob Walsh will continue to serve on the Infrastructure and Safety Committee and will take on the additional responsibility as the Chair of the Parks Recreation and Renovation Committee. Millie Brown. Ms. Brown is our newest council member and will be a member of the Personnel Committee. Brad Stojak. Mr. Stojak will continue to serve as the Economic Development Committee Chair as well as the Finance Committee Chair. As the Finance Committee Chair, he is also our Vice Fair. Yeah. Our town staff truly is our biggest asset that we have as a town. They work together. They truly work as a team. And if we weren't for our police department, our police, our water treatment, our inside staff, they all work together to plan all of these events that we do year round. And without them working as a team, the events which are part of making such a special place just wouldn't happen. So, I would like to recognize the staff that are with us this evening. Krista Hall, who is our founder of the Council and the Green Development Committee. That's our town manager. I also congratulate Ms. Hall for completing the programs through the International Institute of Municipal Trufts and is now a certified in municipal. And this told its last to the end. Susan, she wrote German. Susan has been with the town for, I almost count, how many, 22 years?
Forty-five.
And we have a new town manager up here. Mr. Hudson is going to take over the responsibilities of the town. We can also find the manager. So. Chief Trout this this evening. Just a police department here this evening. So, I'm going to turn the favor over to Chief Trout, who has a couple of moves that he is going to present and who's going to introduce the officers with us this evening.
Wait here, this is very. All right. So, here's the learning of what can drop, chief, please, your ladies. Lieutenant Hudson. And you want to turn on the show. And also Smith, but here's the end. Um, thank you very much for everything he was here. I want to be with you and the police officer here. Bless you. All right. So, um, so the families, I'd like to thank you for support for the government. Uh, this is a good job and it makes it easier for us to assist them. So, thank you. I've been chasing moats, just emotionally, because I'm not able to talk. I'm not trying to turn my time is up, so when it comes around, I start to stop. So, uh. So, on to it. So, uh, firstly, uh, it's for our traffic safety, actually, award. Uh, as one of the two acts, Jeff Smith. Uh, so real quick, um, a crash occurs in San Antonio in 4.4 minutes. And in 2021, another vehicle crashes, cause 967 deaths on the railroad in Virginia. That's a 15% increase from 2020. From 2021, that's actually too understanding, by the way. Um, statistics show that 161 people are injured on the railways in Virginia, everybody. Right, so, uh, Officer Smith, uh, went through nine accidental crashes and five accidental crashes. One being a serious injury, one being a dress injury. Uh, we hear between car and his brains. Sir Smith, for a few control traffic citations, two incidents such as steam, license plate, license driving, seatbelt, several inspections, just here with you. Um, so, Officer Smith, for nine crashes, we had 32 crashes this past year in Dayton. Uh, so we wrote nine out of 32, so that's a new crash leader actor here to tell me. And also a positive is typically when the little contact you have with people as a police officer, you tend to get more complaints, because sometimes you do sound a tinker. Officer Smith has done this with no complaints. So, I say, Officer Smith, can you come on? And now, it was in June this year. Congratulations. Lady Shy, who's not as outgoing as I am, sorry. All right. Next officer being recognized today is Officer Dean Roca. Uh, Officer Roca is going to be Investigator Award. Uh, even though we have a small town, we have a crime. Uh, also, the best one, shredding for the crimes that we were facing, certainly, with FBI. Um, so, other than criminal cases, uh, two sexual assault cases, five drug assaults, and investment, I did assess, mostly critical sound instruction property. And which travel between the counties, two hands, uh, 10, with one still pending, which is about to be ejected, and red on sale. So, uh, we're, it's also 100% sentence rate on those twelve cases. Investigator, he investigated a lot of crimes as well, but are not recording their crimes to citizens such as trespassing, disorder of conduct, and suspicious persons of vehicles as well. Uh, his investigations are thorough and were traced, are written, read, and remember. Uh, phenomenal, watched his interviews, and he classed all evidence, and everything was done. So, I didn't hear any other positives on common work. So, um, again, Officer Roca, thank you for your service and your work.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Councilman Digest has declared to make three minor typographical corrections to the minutes. First, to the December 19th meeting, the action item should be corrected to say that counsel person was charged, so moved, and that his role in the vote, recorded as high instead of low. The other correction is to the meeting of January 4th. The meeting was recessed into closed session at 5:31 PM. Need a person to approve the minutes from the Redmond Town Council meeting of December 12th, 2022, and the special call meeting of December 19th, 2022, and January 4th, 2023, as amended. It was a mouthful. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Digest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mathias. Is there any discussion on this? Roll call please, Ms. Hall.
All right. Mr. Hall. Ms. Mathias?
Hi.
Mr. Seward?
Hi.
Ms. Penel? Hi. Mr. Digest?
Hi.
Mia Jackson?
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Now, we have a resolution regarding time of regular meetings. This is a resolution that we do at the beginning of every year to, um, schedule our meetings and that everything, frankly, but whether, so. That, they are subsequent to our charter of councils to fix the date and time of the regular meetings each year. I mean, a motion to adopt a resolution regarding time of regular meetings and increment whatever meeting times. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Mathias. Do I have a second? And so, pardon? Mr. Ross? Roll call please, Ms. Hall.
All right. Mr. Ross? Ms. Mathias? Hi. Ms. Penel? Hi. Mr. Seward?
Hi.
Mr. Digest? Mia Jackson?
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, we have a consideration of the Dayton Town Council Code of Ethics after each election council adopted Code of Ethics for the members of the Dayton Town Council and for the members of committees and commissions appointed to the Dayton Town Council. The Code of Ethics is important, as it clearly lays out the rules for behavior and provides a ground for a development. Regardless of size, a standard for ethical behavior should be established. I need a motion to adopt Code of Ethics for the members of the Dayton Town Council and the members of the committees and commissions appointed by the Dayton Town Council. I. I need a motion.
Oh, I. So moved.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Hi.
Ms. Penel? Hi. Mr. Digest?
Hi.
Mr. Seward? Uh, Mia Jackson?
I, but, thank you very much. It's now the time of the evening for public comments. Uh, we have a sign up sheet at the door if anybody needs to speak that has not signed up. These speakers will be limited to five minutes and may not be shared with other speakers. I encourage comments to be respectful, and so we have here to reach solutions. I remind council that this is a public comment session and that we are not to respond. Uh, first, this evening is called. Yeah, Hall? Uh, Hall? Hall? Thank you, sir. You can come up here. And if you could just say your name and address, or are you a Dayton resident? Yes, all right. Address, please.
I'm Stotman. I reside at 22 C Drive. Um, and I'm here on behalf of the current Model General Assembly Club at our festival. Um, we are looking to fund our trip again this year. We, we did it last year. Uh, there's been more than a social crisis to send people to go. So, we went for, for $375, so for 50-ish now this year. We are on the set of, uh, being able to send all of our students and, um, our advisor and go for gas to get there. And we have five students and my advisor, we have two, um, rival teams. One of those who is doing a, a task, but one is doing a resolution to a ERA and asking to put that into the Virginia Constitution. Um, this will go to a student elected. As the Model General Assembly, as, as the name says. Um, so, we get to participate in the government, and we get to sit in the actual room where the judges are held. Um, and we have a student elected governor and we have student elected officials, and we essentially spend through those, you know, ensure our policies and build, and all that stuff. Um, it's a really fun way to learn how a government works, especially in our state, because it's essentially the same with our government and the entire nation. Let's see. We do some financial separates. We build fundraisers through checks away with brownies sales. We run to local, the US seven posts and, um, other governments, like local governments, asking for funding and supporting us. And that's a lot that I have written down that I'd like to tell you guys about energy. So, how much are you short right now for your total trip? Um, we're still waiting for some final of the fundraisers and come back and we're looking around to, to your wish. So, you're short $200 total? Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I really enjoyed it. Our next speaker is Mrs. Deb Crank. If you could please step up to the podium there.
I speak every time he was there. That's why he's ever alive. Some people draw. Here's the, has the same resident, if I'm right. So, my name is Deb Crank. I live at 363 College Street, and I don't usually speak at a room, but I'd first like to say thank you to the new council members. Um, thank you to everyone else. It was new, got done in 2022. It's a very exciting year. First off, I, um, do want to let everybody know that, um, several merchants and myself and another neighbor on College Street was able to put off a 200 gift angel tree this year. Um, ready to have a fit style auto notice. Heritage Road State, road as a construction, and my partner, we lived under. It was pretty exciting. We had some pretty amazing stories of how we touched people that, you know, hard time in the holiday season. Um, and I got really good about it. To know that counselors in our schools, kids, families, children that they see every day. Um, and it, it was just a cool experience. Um, I was also lucky enough today to meet with our inner town manager, who was very receptive to my ideas. But this is the public part of it, because I also appreciate town councils' appreciation. Uh, the merchants and myself, and again, to clarify, I'm a gopher for the merchants. I don't own the business. I do whatever they need, but they don't have time to do it for free, which I thought was kind of crazy. Uh, and it took a year, not new, but I'm posing, but, um, it also took about a year, because I think some of them were skeptical, and we just held them for free. But I have a real vested interest in merchants' investments here in Dayton. Um, I spoke about, and I suggested that we relook at our signage policy. I think it might be a bit too restrictive, and maybe it was a better way to change that with our merchants and. I understand we're going to have some ramp, we're possibly coming out early, and I would like to have whoever's running that through economic development, just to, um, to maybe get residents and, um, I hope stand in that area, because it's college and mainstream business. The other thing is, um, because I do everything for free, and that means I do some things in my own time, so I'm going to be working this, maybe in the economic development community, and maybe with the printing post, which we don't need a lot of computing. I probably think we all, you know, pretty blessed, and so a lot of times I don't need a pen, but I used to get some of the things done for our merchants. And then next week, um, for the merchants, we're trying to go spring then, and we'll be needing some of this down, and that, we have to talk about that, so, so much of small town celebration. So, actually, it's a better event for our merchants seeing day and days, if you can believe that. People really get involved in shops, and they're looking around those day and days a little bit, so much sort of drive. And I still invite everybody in the council, it's been, we just visit the merchants all around town. You don't have to buy anything, they just like to stop there and check on them. And then, so, who's to ever come here? So, lastly, interviewing our new town manager, I was wondering if it was possible to have either a merchant or a resident, and we know you're saving on the journey myself. But if there's any way that, even if you have like any questions for the folks during the interview, you're not going to be, we wouldn't comment anything else. But I think we really need to think about someone who's really going to sit around our small town. And maybe on the different rooms, just to maybe I'll see that, but not have a final say or whatever, but just to participate with those interviews. Then, as usual, except maybe the last month, I always have to ask for consideration to reinstate and reinassist councilor back to her committees. I think we're missing an opportunity in our region to be focused on some of the things that we need to do in 2023. But as usual, happy New Year, thank y'all. As you described.
The staff, the thoughts, starting with Ms. Johnson.
Those times I had a great meetings about, uh, I don't know what she said, but doing what that. The first thing that I've seen in the past three weeks, one of them is found, is your water treatment. And if you're setting yourself for, I thought we were for the next probably a couple of plus years. And fortunately, we're learning with that process. And this is going to be, um, silence through some of the COVID money and also through some of Dayton's money that you had in reserve. And we're almost there, almost done. Uh, by the end of this month, the brick should be in operation. And by April 1st, uh, which is on very effective, and we should be on the line. And at that point, we start carrying the car, they learn something. Now, I haven't enough to remember any of those, or those things. And you heard the evidence. My good, they're, they're, because nobody had a reason to pass notice as a process. And he works on notice, it's going to be seventy times for one time, where you may or may not know. That's the system, that's the system that there's decriminalization of that, of, of, of course, the whole world. Uh, so, it also removes a lot more than that to conventional treatment, a lot of conventional treatment and road water. Uh, so, you go ahead and go. And I think that's a product of everybody in the team. So, that's one thing that's on the way. Also, we do a water monitor place for the rest of you in summer. And that will take some old chest nine one out of your system. Now, that doesn't mean anything to most people, but, uh, it would be no reference, and you will find that. It's like times quite often has a lot of joy, but that's what happens in front of that shit. The, the rabbit, you know, it sinks out into the river, it becomes too slick. And while there's no indication of anything that would happen here, uh, the potential for it to happen to deceive. And so, you very chance that it was bad for him, and was the modern type of drugs, and that's just one of the sessions you want, paper room, and that should be done this morning. Uh, on the street side, uh, I think, I think, or someone mentioned sandings earlier. Uh, that project is going to, um, and for, then your celebration, so, I was really about saying, yeah. So, uh, get that done. And even running, you need way in this town. Most everyone, for, goes in and just hire the contractor, the contractor, the chair, or anything, that's everything. You're going to save money by having your spouse sit on, uh, come out and turn around, and bring, and put the base down, and then the concrete, which would just have come in for a big finisher. So, we're accountable to that, and so that's why we watch very effectively. Now, the little reason you hired me was to help him find a new town manager. And we started that process already, there were mansions and friars and today's, their news director. It's written, it's on there. But then, what others may have seen for town managers, was written specifically to find the manager that works in Dayton. We got in the cycle, having managers for three years, and then they leave, and some days aren't happy. Uh, usually it's the manager that's something happened, definitely. But in this town, I think there are citizens so happy as well. And so, what we're going to do is written this thing in a way that would appeal to, uh, and just the right person. And that right person has to be someone that's been in a small town, like, worked in a small town for 46 years. I understand, but that's a different thing, rich man. And if you don't have the right business job, it never works. And that could be over here, at five, over here in town, Dayton, uh, you could be a good person for the job, or it was not going to be that. So. We're going to have invitations. So, the, the council, we're going to have a committee, I have thirty first interviews. Uh, but from those interviews, I think I set aside five or six or seven good applicants, put them into a commission, like a mayor will bring. And then, everybody reviews, they're probably going with three or four minutes to send to a head council, and the head council interviews, and the council then make a decision. So, that's what I was saying. And one of the things I haven't said, which I've been around for a long time, I've heard managers, and I would say, I'm going to go to the sale. And I was wondering if they made it, which is, I'm really sad. I wouldn't say any past people were listening to this, so this is a, a word here, and they're really sensitive to that.
Thanks, sir. Listen, I do want to just clarify, um, Mr. Hudson said, um, finance, and we had, the, we used some of the money that we received from the, um, the grants, but we owed nothing on the water treatment. We were able to pay for fairly, we didn't have the finances in mind. So, to have a three million just higher, um, project and be able to pay for a lot of funds is, uh, is, again, it shows where this town is in a financial, um, position. So, as council members, as council members, you know, going back years, we have a financial policy in place that we cannot go, we're able to, a certain amount. And then, additionally, what we can, we put in investments, just like most of you sitting out there doing, it's extra money you have. So, I mean, as a town, there's not a lot of these that can do every project that they can do, can do it with cash. Um, so. Thank you, sir. Ms. Smith, for the treasures report.
Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. Our treasure staff report is on page 24, and we, uh, whether it's exactly, it's on page 25, and if you have any questions, if you have any, if I can.
I would like to, uh, make one comment, um, on the treasures report. We have had old equipment that has been sitting in garages and not being used for years and years. And, um, that was one of the things we talked about last year, why are we having this equipment? Let's get rid of this equipment. Well, Ms. Smith took a moment. Well, Ms. Smith took the one, this stuff posted and what was on the final take on the sale of the auction items. Sixteen thousand. So this stuff has been just sitting in the garage, just didn't get used anything. So now we're getting down, talking about a $16,000 into this. So thank you, Ms. Smith, for taking care of that. Chief Trout, you have anything additional to say? I'll say that's the first time we've ever had or heard that he didn't have anything else to say. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Hallen, for. You have a written report and it also includes the indoor and outdoor rates of a pretty big, those that were sorry, those. Probably most of the eighteen thousand. That's better than sixteen.
Mr. Hallen, sorry, I did notice in Mr. Make's report there, item for consideration, equipment, weather, personnel policy update. Is that just for future consideration or is it?
Future, um, who has voiced his concern about change of the main policy the past few years? And probably I will get you over the door on that. We can discuss it here.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brant. Mr. Hallen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Hall for community development report.
Well, my time is to give my quick and compact. Um, I will just add a little bit about the comprehensive plan to come through a closure. To get it on the back of the February, for a joint public hearing to. For council considerations about the plan. So that will actually go to the planning commission after January nineteen, January nineteenth at six o'clock. I would love to have the same people that attend that meeting and. Coming up in the planning. And but I've got the planning commission there, where we make any final head of the thing. It's my hope that there would be a recommendation to advertise that for a joint public sharing with council and planning commission at the February meeting. Depending on what we do that, we do that at five thirty, that we know, just to give them the time for that before we do the six o'clock regular meeting. And then hopefully on the agenda for adoption by time coming through in February. So we're getting there.
So for anybody that doesn't know what comprehensive planning is, it is our roadmap. Those, as you know, that goes into something like this is staggering. And our planning commission has worse titles on this. This has worked more than its commission has on this. So it's great to see this type of project with many of the. So it's really nice to see a project of this magnitude coming to a completion and thank you for everything you've done for them. And Mr. Hallen.
Two things in charge. There's written announcements, who won this, who took that. Celebrating the season. She had no items for your mention.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan Byrne. I'm recording. That's what we like to get. This is, now we're going to move on to community reports. We'll start with Mr. Diakas for the economic community development.
Sir, we did not mean, but I did want to just say to the audience again, it shines through the holidays and, and thank you, sir, for reporting there for community development. I think it's great to see you and all the holiday declaration winners and the contest winners and the shop local holiday giveaway, which I think is well received by the businesses. And hopefully that generated some additional traffic and interest and always good to showcase our wonderful town and what it has to offer. So always special. And I'll just highlight too, and it is reported with Grammy's ice cream being under new ownership. From the, there's a farm stable. That's an exciting development. And congratulations to the new owners, Scott and Kelly and Val and Dragan as well. So always good to welcome those new folks into the, to the town. So.
And I would like to say that if anybody wasn't happy who ran those, the prizes for the shop local, this announcement that shows to. If anybody has a shoe, write down those. To Mr. Diakas for finance.
Yes, sir. Before, we obviously need to have the finance to me, how are you looking at three or seven? And anyone?
Strike you with some dignification, Mr. Stewart. We would not need, so nothing to report, but we will also be meeting in January. Wes. Perseid, Ms. Mathias.
We have not met since the last week.
And we're going to have one of those days as well. Mr. Stewart, we're going to afford the police committee. Didn't know we need, but hey, we're going to this motion. January sixteenth. We have a council person that resigns. It kind of leaves some things and thoughts. So we rearrange in our council committee assignments. So that's why we didn't have the meetings that we would normally have in November, December. So now it's time to play catch ups. And please, Mr. Stewart, we just talked about, now I get to talk. Twenty twenty two was another, you know, magical year in Dayton. As Mr. Hallen stole my thunder, this water treatment chain is another one of those huge, immense projects. This project has been talked about since I got a council, which was ever six years ago. The previous council, actually two councils ago. They're here and saying, what are you sitting out here? This has been a metal project. We have different, we worked in different systems. It has been an incredible project that's been in three different councils. And to be coming to the finish line as we are right now. And be able to say that we're going to water treatment, to be able to serve our citizens safe water, not only today, but for the future. It's just a pretty special thing. So thank you for all council members that have been involved with this over the years. So we had a. Landowner that sank fully, sold us some land because we didn't have enough land to put this on. So it's not the staff and council members, the community helps as well. So for everybody that's been involved with this, it's just been a great project. As Maggie, it was very, we. Christmas parade, cocoa, string lighting, caroling. Since we started doing. The, it's in the, the context for decorations. Every year we're seeing more and more, not just decorate, really decorate. Really, it really is nice to be able to drive up to the streets today and see the people that have so much time, you know, decorating their house. And it just makes their street, the entire town light up, literally. So thank you for everybody that is, yes, take that extra time and effort to do that. That is all I have. Any other council comments?
Well, sir, I did just want to officially welcome the board. Ms. Pennell is officially as a councilwoman and I was very excited to have you aboard and welcome back to familiar face. But very excited to have you. So congratulations.
And we have no business to business this evening, but we have a new business. At this time, I entertain a motion to enter in the closed session pursuant to Virginia Code, section two point two, three, seven, eleven, A one. For discussion and consideration of the resignation as a specific public officer, appointings or employees of a town in pursuit of Virginia Code, section two point two, dash, three, seven, one, one, eight. To consult with legal counsel and jury or retained by the town regarding specific legal matters. Requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, time, subject to matter of the closed session, is a resignation of a former town employee. Now, that is a mouthful. But the reason we're there is to protect citizens. Because we're going to go into closed session and we can definitely specifically talk about what I just said. Nothing else can be talked. We can't talk about anything saying that we want to. It is only this and we have a party right there. Make sure that we don't talk about anything else. So, so do you have a motion for that? Thank you, Ms. Ross. Second. No, you don't hear that.
Yeah.
She's, she's going to throw a motion to adjourn now. Mr. Stewart, second, all favorite.
Hi.
All of those. Motion passes and this is finally recessed into closed session. Welcome to the council chamber. So you can stay in here if you want. She said need to, I'm going to throw something out. I'll throw that out for you now. The eyes have it, motion has. With respect to just concluded closed session and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from over meetings, according to the Freedom of Information Act. And only such a public business matters have been identified in the motion by which the closed session was reached. This class were considered in the meeting by the council. Could. Call please, Ms. Hallen.
Ms. Mathias. Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Ms. Pennell.
Mr. Diakas?
Hi.
Some time.
From Ms. Pennell to adjourn this evening. It's been a motion that I moved to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor. Hi. Well, who's reading adjourn?